Hi. My name is Trevor Rook. I feel like a minority because I don't have a political view. I'm just a comic that wants to be on a show, just for comic purposes. Did that make sense? I think it did. Basically, what I was -- I just came to see what was going on. I've worked on this show for about two years now. And then we got ready to film, and then we heard that they might take the channel away. It kind of upset us a little bit. But basically, I started thinking, and I watched this show the other day about the Piss Show and everything like that. And I think it's sad that we're letting a few people that seem to offend some people or whatever totally do away with something that's real beneficial to this community. Basically, it's a fantastic learning tool for anyone that's interested in broadcasting. I mean, they can actually, for free, go and learn hands-on all there is about television broadcasting. How to put on a show, how to write a show. And I think we're neglecting the fact that it's not just a place for political views, it's a place to learn. And it's also a place for a release valve for anyone that has something on their chest that they want to say. And I think for us to blame the actual public access channel for a few offensive people is kind of ridiculous. I think the producers are the ones that are responsible for that, not the channel that gives people the freedom to put things on. And I guess I'm not any -- and I'm not a person that would like to make an opinion for someone else. I'm not a babysitter. I think that we're not obligated to babysit people. We're obligated to teach them and to make them have decisions of their own. And I think it's kind of sad that a lot of times when something offensive comes up, we want to put that away in the closet, and we don't want to deal with it. To me, that's a cop-out. To me, the best way to do something is to stand aside and give your own opinion, to work a little harder. That's a challenge, you know, but to educate on the other side. Because if these people aren't voicing their opinion on the air, then they're going to voice it somewhere else. And the fact of we need to keep it away from people, you've got a big job ahead of you. If these people don't do it on the air, they might start coming to my home, and I don't really want that. But I have the obligation to turn the channel. I think scrambling it is kind of sad, too, because, again, you're playing the babysitter here. And a babysitter's job is basically to just keep a kid in charge, keep him from not hurting himself or others until the mom gets on. And that's not our job. We're trying to babysit adults. We're trying to say that this is what you can't watch, and we're trying to tell people and their families what they have to -- how they run their families. And that's not what this country's about. This country's about families being able to teach their kids what they want. And just because I have views, I consider myself a Christian. I am offended by some things that are in public access, but I am no way so powerful and so full of wisdom that I can tell other people that that's also offensive. I think that's where we lose a big reason of what this country is founded on, and it's just a word, it's respect. I'm going to respect your rights to watch whatever you want, say whatever you want, as long as you respect mine. And public access is a perfect example of that. Not only can somebody put something on that's offensive to some people, but it's another person who could put on something that retaliates that. You've got your place for your valve, for you to speak your mind, speak your piece. You know, when we start talking about what censorship, then that's a big responsibility. Who's going to decide what we can watch and what we can't? My comedy show has a lot of slapstick in it. Right now, they're censoring Looney Tunes. I think it's a crime. But is that going to be censored? It's just innocence, you know? A lot of this stuff is just innocence. And I think personally, a personal opinion, a lot of this stuff is just a person's valve. It's a shock value, which is very well-known in music and television and everything, freedom of speech, a shock value. A person wants to say something, they want to raise an uproar. Personally, I think the Piss Show probably wouldn't have been watched by so many people if such an uproar wasn't have been made. I didn't just turn it off because I thought it was offensive, I just thought it was bad. You know, and I would watch some of the others. There's a good show on at 10:30, but it plays against Star Trek, and that's an opinion of mine. It's not whether something's offensive or not, it's just a matter of taste. There's a thousand other things that I can be doing with my time. And if I'm going to get -- waste all my energy being offended by one channel that I can turn, then I need to get out of the house more often. And that's all I've got to say. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name's Dan Clinchard, and I hate public speaking. I am a sponsor of one of the programs on the access channel, Time for Hemp series, which also made it into the schedule there, mentioned. Actually, I should be home doing homework, but I felt compelled to be here to say what I wish went without saying, although it's been said a lot. And I just want to read three paragraphs from John Milton, Areopagiticus. And if this sounds old and maybe sort of challenging to even interpret, which is part of the point I want to make, because I'm a little disappointed that this is even still Good -- oh, this is sort of directed to the Christian concerns. And so, "Good and evil, we know in the field of this world grow up together almost inseparably, and the knowledge of good is so involved and interwoven with the knowledge of evil, and in so many cunning resemblances hardly to be discerned, that those confused seeds, which were imposed on psyche as an incessant labor to cull out and sort asunder, were not more intermixed. It was from out of the rind of one apple tasted that the knowledge of good and evil, as two twins cleaving together, leaped forth into the world. And perhaps this is that doom which Adam fell into, knowing good and evil, that is to say, of knowing good by evil, as therefore the state of man now is. What wisdom can there be to choose, what continence to forbear, without the knowledge of evil? He that can apprehend and consider vice with all her baits and seeming pleasures, and yet abstain, he is the true warfareing Christian. I cannot praise a fugitive and cloistered virtue, unexercised and unbreezed, that never sallies out and sees her adversary, but slinks out of the race, where that immortal garland is to be run for, not without dust and heat. Assuredly we bring not innocence into the world, we bring impurity much rather. That which purifies us is trial, and trial is by what is contrary. That virtue, therefore, which is but a youngling in the contemplation of evil, and knows not the utmost that that vice promises to her followers, and rejects it, is but a blank virtue, not a pure. Her whiteness is but an excremental whiteness." And in this case, "excremental" just means external, on the surface, shallow virtue. And there's another brief mention on the question of what sense it makes to call a lot of attention to something, you know, you don't think people should be seeing. Although their own late arguments and defenses against the prelates might remember them, that this obstructing violence meets, for the most part, with an event utterly opposite to the end which it drives at. Instead of suppressing sects and schisms, it raises them and invests them with a reputation. The punishing of wits enhances their authority, says the Viscount Saint Albans, and the forbidden writing is thought to be a certain spark of truth that flies up in the faces of them who seek to tread it out." And if somebody thinks Milton was just writing about writing, he also mentions that whatever thing we hear or see, sitting, walking, traveling, or conversing, may be fitly called our book. And finally, what should ye do then? Should ye suppress all this flowery crop of knowledge and new lights sprung up, and yet springing daily in this city? Should ye set an oligarchy of twenty engrocers over it, to bring a famine upon our minds again, when we shall know nothing but what is measured to us by their bushel? Believe it, lords and commons, they who counsel ye to such a suppressing, do as good as bid ye suppress yourselves."
For those viewers who might just be tuning in, we are holding a hearing of the Cable Franchise Review Committee, and some persons in the audience and some who are watching at home might choose to communicate with us through writing. Anything should be addressed to us to Cable Television Franchise Review Committee, 129 North 10th Street, room 111, and the zip code is 68508. And now we're ready to hear our next Christian.
Hello. My name is Lisa Maltrich, and I am the producer of Lisa's Idiot Show, which was named as an unusual comedic taste show. And I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my viewers and all the people who helped me produce my show. And I'd just like to start off by saying that my involvement with public access has probably been one of the best experiences of my life. It has taught me how to use all the equipment that you'd need to go into producing a real television show. I mean, how many people can say that they can go into a studio and know how to work all the cameras, all the lights, all the editing equipment, all the tapes, and stuff like that? It's just been a really great experience, and all of it's free. I think that one of the problems of people my age has been trying to find stuff to do around Lincoln that, you know, is cheap and, well, even free for that matter. And this is a great opportunity, and I tell all my friends that, you know, they ask, "Oh, how much does it cost to have your own show?" And I'm like, "It's free," you know? And they're like, "No way." And I'm like, "Way," you know? And they're like, "This is great, you know, we want to go get our own shows, too." So I think that's a great opportunity for people to get involved in producing their own shows. And from my personal experience, it has helped broaden my career interest even, and I am thinking about even majoring in broadcast journalism as I go into college. Also, it's a very good use of my time. I mean, I'm not out doing drugs, I'm not out spray painting my opinions on telephone poles or something like that. I'm expecting my opinions over the airways, which I think is a lot better than any other thing I could be doing right now in my life. One thing I would like to say about Cablevision is that the equipment is rather poor. One example of this is when we checked out the remote cameras they have at Cablevision, we had to wait about two weeks to get on the list to check out cameras. And then after we did check out a camera, we made the mistake of leaving it on a bright light too long, and we got the famous burn-in. And for any of you who don't know what that is, it's when an image is burnt in on the tubes of the camera, and sometimes it can be erased and sometimes it can't. And the people at Cablevision told us that it would cost, what was it, like $27,000 for us if they couldn't get it burned out? And so we figured that was our last stint with the remote cameras. We used our home video cameras from now on. Luckily, they didn't get the burn-in out. But, I mean, if our home video cameras, our VCR cameras, can do better than the cameras at Cablevision, I think that's saying, you know, something about their equipment right there. One good thing about the public access channel is that it provides an alternative. I like to think of it as alternative TV, because really, there isn't that much to watch at some times, you know, during the night. I compiled a list of the program's schedule for a Sunday night at 11 o'clock, that's when my show's on. And what's available is Rogan's Heroes, that's like a sports blooper show, it's really dumb if any of you have seen it. The Best of Princes, the rock stars' rock galas. Some guy named Jon Osteen on Channel 15 I've never even heard of. The Dick Van Dyke Show, now come on, how old is that show? Baseball Tonight on ESPN, the new WKRP in Cincinnati, and The Bonfire of the Vanity is a one-star movie on HBO. I mean, that just shows how much choice we really have in our viewing stuff. And I mean, sure, my show might not be the greatest, and it may be sort of stupid at times and stuff, but I've seen that a lot of people actually do watch Channel 14 and enjoy what we're doing, you know, because -- just because there isn't much else out there for them to watch. Finally, I'd just like to close by saying what I think should be done about the problem with Channel 14. And I'd like to do it in terms of my idols, Wayne and Garth from Wayne's World. Number one, no way. Number two, way. Number three, no way. Option number four, way. Number five, way. And I'd like to say a big "way" for A, I like that idea a lot, on number five. But I don't really like number D, because I don't have a job, and I think that would really hurt some of the people, the younger people who are producing programs, to have to pay for ads. Thanks.
I'm Marcia Anderson. I represent the Nebraska Vegetarian Society and the Greater Nebraska Animal Welfare Society, and we currently have some import programs aired on the access channel. Nonprofit groups such as ours have what we feel are some very important messages, ideas, and issues to present to the public regarding the environment, animal protection, and health concerns. Our messages are sometimes unpopular, but that doesn't mean we don't have views that are worth airing. So that's our best available avenue that we have to get these views out to the public. The other available means are very limiting. The popular media, the newspapers and news channels limit and edit our messages to their discretion. If we write letters to the editor, they're edited sometimes so inappropriately as to leave the reader wondering just what it is the writer was getting at. And certain for-profit groups, certain for-profit special interest groups apparently can use public funds to take out large ads in the newspaper to air their views. We don't have that available to us. We don't have 800-some dollars to spend on an ad in the newspaper for rebuttal. So the channel, the public access channel, is our best available means to express our views. On behalf of the two organizations that I'm affiliated with, we'd like to ask that you keep Channel 14, do not scramble it. Please ask viewers to exercise their own discretion or have it removed by cable access. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm Julie Jorgensen, and I'm speaking on behalf of myself tonight. I think one of the main problems that's going on here with the public access channel is that it's such a new tool. We all grew up in a time when everything that we saw on television was dominated by literally a handful of men in New York. And I know I, for one, at the age of 41, I still suffer from the effects of having grown up wanting to be somebody like June Cleaver and realizing that I couldn't be that. And so I, you know, really think that public access is a great thing, because that scenario will never happen again. The problem, though, is that we're novices. We in the public are novices at using this, and one of the mistakes that we often make, I think, is about audience. I work at a television station, and I do audience research, and I've been doing that work now for 12 years. And sometimes we think that when we get in front of a television camera and have something put out over the cable system, that magically an audience appears. And that's not the case, especially with as many channels as we have now. Sometimes there may be no viewers at all. Other times, it's very obvious that we do have viewers out there. And unfortunately, the problem is that when -- that viewers do want to tell you what they think about programs. Now, my job is to actively solicit feedback from the audience, but even if you don't solicit it, any television station has got to have staff members that are there to take those viewer calls, because viewers will call, and they will write, and they want to tell you that they like something, or they want to complain about something. And if the city of Lincoln is really serious about wanting to support access, then get a staff person to handle those calls, because it's going to take some time before viewers are used to this type of a channel, and they don't know who to call. The first person they're going to call usually is Cablevision to complain about a program that offends them. Secondly, they might call the city officials. And I can tell you, I also happen to be on the cable advisory board, and while I vehemently defend free speech, I have to make a public statement that I think that Donny Smith's programs were really very disgusting and had absolutely no artistic value to them whatsoever. And I, unfortunately, by virtue of being on the cable board, am one of the people that took some of those complaint calls, and they weren't very nice, and I really didn't like getting those kind of calls in my home. And I know how Cablevision staff feels when they get those kind of calls about a program that they really had nothing to do with. And I know how city officials feel when they get those calls about a program that they had nothing to do with. And so if this company is seriously wanting to take care of that problem, it seems to me they have a pretty elaborate phone system in place now that has sort of a tree system, and there's no reason they couldn't build something in to route those calls to at least a recording device, so that those feedback messages could be routed to the appropriate people. And the city, as I say, they generally get the calls during the daytime, they've got staff there. Get a staff person, train them to handle angry people with some courtesy and some respect, and listen to what they're saying, and again, try to route that feedback to the appropriate party, which is the producer. And thirdly, I would vehemently support the idea of making these producers responsible for their programs and having to at least put their names on the screen. Now, if you make it a whole lot more than that, then you're endangering them in terms of harassment, but make that -- build in that responsibility, because this is a new tool for the public, and it's almost overwhelming. We're like -- we're almost like children with a gun. We have to learn how to use it. And even after we learn how to use it, say, 10, 20 years from now, there's still going to be young people that are going to come along and not be very responsible and abuse this facility. So you've got to have some mechanism in place to deal with those people in the community that are offended, and respect the fact that they're offended, and handle that kind of a situation. If you're going to do television, do it right and get those people there to take responsibility and to route that feedback to the appropriate parties, because viewers expect that, and they want to tell you what they think.
My name is Ron Kurtenbach. I've produced a program, probably the longest-standing public access program in Lincoln. And I wanted to say at the outset that I admire Donny Smith's courage in attacking the smugness, the hypocrisy of Christian supremacy in this city. I admire his work, it had artistic value, and I was pleased that it was on the public access channel. I wanted to tell you a -- I wanted to -- and we can debate that on my program, if it's on in the future, just give me a call, talk. John Snowden appeared at a meeting of KZOM, which was founded as a public access, free speech, non-commercial radio station, and I was instrumental in its founding, a private nonprofit organization. And John Snowden appeared at a meeting, appealing to the board of directors to respect the right of dissent, to challenge the board of directors of this community access radio station. This is an allegory for you to think about. And he said, he called on the board to take the high road, adopt the First Amendment in a private organization. They didn't. I was purged from the station for criticizing what I thought was the commercialization, the underwriting announcements becoming ads like on ETV and KZOM, the parasitism of some people using the station for their own commercial ends, and criticizing the board of directors' ban of on-air criticism of station policies and politics. The camera person, just here a moment ago, was one of the members earlier on tried to purge me from the station. And one of the members of this board of directors at this last purge, successful purge, was John Taylor, who, at that point, was the director of the Nebraska Civil Liberties Union. And John Snowden, a law professor, made this very high-minded call for First Amendment in a private, community access organization. Well, John Taylor wasn't persuaded. He supported what I characterize as the purge. I sent a letter to the Lincoln Journal Star, Sunday paper, trying to correct the way in which the story was told in this private newspaper, controlled by private interests, profit-making interests like Cablevision, profit-seeking, profit-making interests. And I told what I just said, basically, and I included the John Taylor story. I said, "Has Nebraska sunk to the level of, after eight years of Reagan, into, well, eight years of Reagan, that the head of the Nebraska Civil Liberties Union participated in purging the right of dissent at KZOM? How far have we sunk?" Well, that line, that sentence, was censored from the Lincoln Journal Star. Once you turn over these very high-minded values of free expression to profit-seeking interests, private interests, arrogant interests, trickish interests, interests that can't stand blasphemy, can't stand attacks on their legitimacy, once you give that over to people who can get away with repression, you've taken a very dangerous step. And that's precisely why the public access channel is so unique, and so many people are making wise use of it because of the repression that has occurred in other parts of this society. If you really are interested, if this culture is really interested in knowing how people feel, whether it's blasphemous or not, we have to have the free flow of information. And I find extremely ironic for Mr. Savery to make the claim that his life has been that of defending the free flow of information, but now it's only political ideas that he protects, it seems. That's his sort of work definition. We have underway a process here of trying to legitimize, to give some prestige to the mayor's agenda to abolish First Amendment rights on the cable system. That's what's underway. And in a way, I really object to this whole process, because there's an effort underway to legitimize, to give a sweet smell to something that stinks, an effort to repress an achievement of First Amendment rights on cable television. That's what's underway here, and I object to the process. I encourage none of us to be used in this process. And I object to periodically coming and protesting what has been achieved when reactionaries like Reagan or Bush or the mayor or others will try to take away what's been achieved. This has happened with affirmative action. A lot of gains were made in the civil rights movement, the anti-war movement, and we end up coming back again to keep what we have achieved. It's an ongoing process, and that's why, finally, the people of Lincoln should own and control the cable system. It shouldn't be in the hands of a profit-maximizing corporation. Once you get into profit maximization, a lot of things are negotiable, can be cast aside for the sake of profit of pandering to the majority of customers, and that's what's underway here, too. I think it's an outrage what this whole process I object to. And I hope that justice will prevail. And I'm pleased with some of the, like Ms. Galey's comments, there's surprising free spirit in this coming out of this, and unwillingness to be used by the mayor's agenda. But I do object, in a fundamental way, to this entire process. The people of Lincoln should own and control the cable system. It should serve the communications needs, the active communications needs of the people of Lincoln. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Ron Reek, and I represent myself. I've sat here and listened to a lot of comments, pro and con on the situation, First Amendment, freedom, censorship, who has equal rights, and all the various factors that have been discussed. I have a question of all of you sitting here on the panel. How many of you have driver's license? Raise your hands. I assume you didn't walk here. Now, my question is, they're talking about censorship and what the problems that that brings about. Driver licenses that you have to drive here this evening, I think, are issued to you on certain conditions, that if you drive properly and within, say, the laws or expectation of the state of Nebraska, they let you drive. But if you abuse those freedom, that freedom, and use it neglectfully, you're possible to lose your driver's license, and you lose that freedom. And if Channel 14 is such, you know, a great asset to the city of Lincoln, then we ought to treat it with responsibility with those that use it and not abuse it, just the same as you have a driver's license. And there are certain people in position that determine whether you're going to abuse that right. The fact that, you know, they talk about the First Amendment. Our forefathers, I'm sure, when they wrote that, had no idea that this country would fall to such a degree of lowness or decay as our morality has in the last few years. I think that people are trying to straddle the fence, try to walk down the middle of the road. They're not -- we don't have many positions to make decisions whether they're right They're not, we don't have men in positions to make decisions whether they're right. They just want to be the nice guy, and at the same time, the country becomes more decrepit. Just the morality of this country has dropped to a lowest level. The attack on the family, the children and the teenagers have, I don't know what kind of life they live out there. I'm sure it's not the moral ideal that what a parent would like to have them. They have to observe this, listen to it, be before them almost night and day. And we have men in position that could make a decision, but they keep sidestepping the issue. They say, "Well, the laws won't let us do this," or "The government has certain restrictions," or "There's always some excuse." But the fact is, we are morally deteriorating more every year, and where that is, is because good men stand idle and do nothing and let the corruption continue on. And I was reading a book that is just opening my eyes, a guy that, his main goal was to attack God, attack religion, attack morals, and change the idea in the schools from creation to evolution. You know who that man was? Karl Marx. I look out in my door, or read the paper, or you hear the radio, practically everything this man set out to attack over a hundred years ago is now in place. In communism, it's okay to lie, cheat, destroy, kill, avoid responsibility, anything to gain an individual, like communism, to profit it and forget about anyone else that they have to walk on. And sometimes these programs on Channel 14, they ought to take in consideration that maybe they're just trying to walk on somebody with some program that is not profitable to the city of Lincoln. So I encourage someone in this committee to take a stand and have enough backbone to make some decisions as to what's right and what's wrong. This straddling the fence is not going to get it. And I just respect you guys taking all this time this evening to hear all these numerous complaints, but I'm sure something good will come out of this, and I thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rico Katros, and I represent myself, my TV program, Grace to You, and most of all, the minority that I represent, and that being the fact that I'm a Christian, and the values that I have are far different than most of the people probably that have programming possibly on this, on cable. And the thing that I want to address tonight is that I am ashamed of the fact that I have neglected in my responsibility as a citizen to help people see the need to have their hearts transformed, because that's what we need. My heart goes out to you as a committee, because, man, I mean, whatever happens, there's going to be people all over you. And I appreciate you, and I submit to your leadership and to your authority, as I appreciate the mayor, and I love him, and I want to support him as a citizen underneath his authority in this particular city. But the thing that I see is that I believe that we have got to have values in this community that are based upon God's Word. And our nation is crumbling. I mean, you look around, fifty years ago, thirty years ago, it is sad. And to see and to hear some of the things that happen, and even see people mocking right now, I've had that happen many a times, because I stand for what I believe, because I was set free from bondage by Christ. And yet, we let all kinds of garbage come into our community. Now, if you fear God, and I don't know who fears God here, I do, I respect him, I don't fear him, we have got to take stands that are going to honor what God wants in our community. Do we want God's blessing in this community? The only way that God gets blessed, and the only way this community is going to be blessed, is when we stand for what is righteous. And some of the things I, I don't, personally, I don't have a TV, because I don't have time to watch it, and I think it's, you know, it's a way to entertain people that don't have a lot of mentality sometimes, but we've got to learn to fear God. And I just appeal to you, and I encourage you, and I know how tough it is, and I don't know what your stand is on Christianity, but there has to come a point when we start making stands to say, "I'm going to fear God." I have a message that I'm willing to stand and die for, and I think that's what we've got to have, we're willing to stand for what we believe. And I wonder if some of the programs that are questionable, if those individuals are willing to stand for that. Now, I've put them on a list, and I'm going to begin, I want to aggressively meet these men and see what makes them tick, because I understand, I used to be in the same position they were in. I was lost, I had no hope of glory. I represent the Lord Jesus Christ. I know I'm going to spend eternity with him, and I'm concerned about some people that probably won't be there, who are doing things that are contrary to what God's Word has to say. The Bible says in Malachi 4:6, "God says, 'To save a nation, we have to turn the hearts of the fathers back to the children, and the children back to the fathers.'" Again, I say, my heart goes out to you. You've got a difficult task ahead of you. I'll be praying for you. Most of all, do we want God's blessing? And do we fear God? Do we really fear him? Thanks so much.
Good evening. My name is Tom Bear, and I represent myself. I have a different experience with public access, and my experience happens in my living room. And I experience public access in the comfort of my living room, and I appreciate having public access on my TV. That means a lot to me, and I want that. And I want uncensored access to public television, to Channel 14. So those of you keeping score, and I've been here for three and a half hours, and some of you are keeping score, that will be option number two. Sentence, the first sentence, preserve the public access channel as a public forum by leaving it unchanged. And if you're not comfortable with that, it would be option number five through the first comma, and that is, leave the public access channel unchanged. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Lynn Rogers, and I am an access professional, trained college-type for that sort of thing. See, we're up to number thirty-two. It's showing. I'd like to read you all a brief letter from the Nebraska State Historical Society. Dear Lynn, thanks for bringing the video magazine tape by. I've created a Lincoln Community Television collection within our moving image holdings in which to place it and any future donations from your operation. I hope we will get more. The Nebraska State Historical Society is now preserving public access programming for us. These people deal with pioneers. The people that you have seen here tonight are true pioneers. They represent a new age of electronic communications brought to the grassroots level. They've got a lot of problems in dealing with learning and developing their techniques and getting equipment and getting sets and trying to deal with budgets and a whole lot of other things that are connected with trying to turn out quality television. There are several areas that I really want to address quickly, because I see these pioneers moving in the future to areas that are going to be very, very interesting in this city. First of all, we need to be dealing with training, okay? It's a very, very important issue. Right now, the training mostly is involved with pushing a button and saying, "This is a camera," and go with it. We need to be talking, telling these people, especially the young people, about rights and responsibilities in a real sense. They need to be told in a very detailed way what obscenity, what the law, the real law is, you know, that we're talking jail time here, folks, this is not, you know, something that's to be played with. They need to be taught about what happens to people when they put, that they can ruin reputations, that they can damage a lot of things. These are all things that are taught in journalism classes right from day one, and they're the kinds of things that need to be available to our producers in the future. And I would hope the city can deal with those kinds of real training issues in the future. There's one public access facility located clear down by the south of the state penitentiary. In the future, and I visualize a situation where we have both government and public access facilities all over this community, so that people that live, for example, in Havelock, don't have to drive ten miles to get to a public access facility, a public access facility that they can use for public meetings like this. This is the perfect demonstration of what public access, government access, educational access were designed to do, to make our democratic process more open. And I have never been prouder of this community than I am tonight by the demonstration that our producers have shown. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Richard Terrell. I'm an artist, and earlier this evening, I was at a discussion of the Sistine Chapel ceiling, and now I'm here where we're talking about Pith. It's kind of a strange evening, but I think it's a commentary on the different cultures of the Renaissance and our own that, in a culture where artists really had very little autonomy compared to our own day, produced things like the Sistine Chapel ceiling and our own culture in which artists have all the autonomy they could possibly want. We argue about the artistic value of flushing a bucket of urine. But I do want to say that the issue of the artist's autonomy, which is touted today in today's context, largely as a prerequisite for quality, is really an anti-historical idea. Artists, the idea of the artist's autonomy is complete freedom of expression, has never really played a very strong role in the history of cultures. I would remind you that if Michelangelo had been able to function on the basis of his own autonomy and his own desires, he would not have painted the Sistine Chapel ceiling. In fact, he didn't want to do it, protesting that painting was not his craft. Pope Julius II knew better and basically ordered him to do it, and he produced his greatest work. So I simply want to remind you that the autonomy and the absolute freedom of the artist is not a prerequisite for a quality culture. I have one concern, and I don't know if it's been raised earlier tonight or not, but I read somewhere in the paper that the cable company was considering airing indecent programs after a certain time at night, after eleven o'clock at night, it would be legitimate to air indecent programs. I would simply reflect that all that would really do would be to legitimize indecency. And indecency is a concept that measures the final limits of something, and if you legitimize indecency, of course, you have to have some concept as to what constitutes the indecent, but if you legitimize it, there literally is no end then as to what is allowed. And this is something that you have to consider. What if someone wanted to air snuff films on cable access, for example? If you don't have a standard, then you have nothing to go on. And I would, I would say that there's never been a society, ever, in the history of the world where you had a total openness to the expression of anything and everything, especially on the claims of anybody who wants to be known as an artist coming forward to say Personally, I'm a little bit irritated at the fact that people who often have, have not paid any of the price that people pay to become artists, and there's a price in rejection that sometimes you go through. I have, I have access, public access, to a public gallery, the Sheldon Art Gallery. But I can't show my works there unless George Newbert or Daphne Deeds or somebody there agrees to it. And sometimes that rejection is of value. It means I have to maybe get my act together a little bit, critique my own work, improve it. There are some positive lessons to be learned from being told no. And any artist goes through that, and it's part of the growth process. I would have one final comment to make concerning comments by Mr. Kurtenbach. He poses as a, as a defender of free expression, which I think is ironic, because on his program, he consistently upholds a social system that historically has proved to be the most repressive of free expression, and it's a contradiction. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Todd Droppel, and I just have a few things here. I wanted to read to you out of this morning's newspaper, in the entertainment section, no You know, this last man up here was talking about art, and when asked whether or not Mr. Smith considered his work to be art, he said yes, that it was considered to be a work of art. But yet, just above that, he is quoted as saying, "If I really wanted to shock people, I would do things much worse." So admittedly, he's doing things bad already, although he could do much worse. And I don't disagree with him that he could do probably much worse. And then also in the article here, in a quote, when he's asked why he feels the need to show someone urinating into a toilet bowl, he says, "I'm not sure of the reasons, except that it seemed appropriate at the time, because I was pissed off about a lot of different things, et cetera. It seemed like a good visual expression," he said. So are we seeing someone expressing art, or are we seeing somebody throwing a temper tantrum on public television for the rest of us to view, just because he's irritated at some of you, maybe some of us, people like me, who represent a conservative Christian I think it's wrong. I really think it's wrong that we have to stoop so low as to allow this kind of thing on a public access channel. It's just outright abuse. I don't support the right of people not to have freedom of speech. I think that freedom of speech is, is good. But when it comes down to airing something like this on a public television show, I just think that there needs to be some censoring as to what is good and what is valuable to our community, which I think is the goal of having a public access channel. And other issues here, when we're talking about attacks on different races, religions, that type of thing, it has no place in a public access channel, despite the fact that it may be somebody's view or right to speak out. It causes nothing but chaos in our society and promotes violence, things that are not good. Smith's show here quotes here, "The controversial content includes a view of a man urinating and several attacks on Christianity." There's just no call for it, just no call for it at all. I don't know why we'd have to air this type of a show at all. So I guess I would be in support of abolishing the public access channel and establishing So I guess I would be in support of abolishing the public access channel and establishing a new nonprofit corporation and have a community access channel, which we could get some of the majority opinion to help determine what is shown and what is not shown. I think if we took a vote of the Lincoln population as a whole, we'd see people supporting a more conservative view than what has been taken at this point, up to this point, on the public access channel. And I just want to tell everybody here, too, that I stand up here for Christ, and anybody that is going to make mockery of Jesus Christ, I think is going to have to answer to some serious crimes, perhaps here, but surely in the next life. Thank you.
My name is Rhonda Coons. I didn't come prepared or anything like that. I've never been anything like this before. I've been here since quarter to seven, too, listening to everybody, what everybody had to say. And once you come up here, everything that you had to say, you forget, so I dotted down some notes, and so I wouldn't forget. The rules, obscene material rules, something that struck me, or something that I was thinking earlier, contemporary community standards. It's to be in accordance with community standards, and I would hope that our standards are higher than some of the shows that are listed and some of the shows that I've seen. It scares me to death that little brothers, little four-year-old cousins, somebody like that, who's in a room by themselves with a TV on, could see something like this. I watch Anton Meyer's show. It's the only place that I get to see Christian videos, VH1, MTV doesn't play anything like that, and I love them. Rock, Christian videos are the greatest. And it's something that I don't want to lose, so it's not that I'm against public access The option that I choose is number three. The analogy of a driver's license, I thought, was very appropriate. Somebody on a ship without a captain, whatever you want to call it, this thing is just going with no leadership, and I think it's getting out of hand, and I think that's why we're all here. Somebody said a long time ago, about seven o'clock, seven thirty, that if you don't like what they have to say on their show, well, make your own show and say we have to say back. You know, if somebody's going to attack Christian views that I have, why should I stoop to their level? Why should I have to stoop to their level to make my own show to attack what they have to stand for? That they're mad about something that I believe in, or they just want to get their rights or their views out, well, that's fine, but they could go about it in a lot better way or a lot nicer way. So I don't feel that we should have to do that. I think somebody needs to take control of the channel. I don't think we should lose it or scramble it or anything like that. I just question, why are we airing these at all? And that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Steve Daigle. Keep this short. Basically, I feel that all the views, who wanted to express their view, all the people had the opportunity. This is an example of community access. I'd like to reiterate on the point that for the full potential cable access, I believe we will need the equipment, the money that has been set aside for updated equipment. Camera use tonight has very difficult picking up of low-light situations. They advertise on cable vision, a computer system that allows for creativity, runs a couple thousand. The buttons down there stick off, and machinery, it just needs to be updated, I believe, for the full potential to be realized. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much.
Hello. My name is John Arnold, and I would like to remind this committee that Channel 14 is not a Christian broadcast channel. It is open for everybody to use, even if they want to criticize Christianity or if they want to tell you how to grow bean sprouts. My grandchildren say I'm an old fogey, and I have five grandchildren. I've always thought of myself as a pretty conservative Republican also, but I'm also a very, very firm believer in the Constitution and the freedom for everyone to voice their opinions, even though it is unpopular. I have watched Channel 14. I don't think you should do anything with it. I don't think you should make any changes. Well, maybe moving some of the program back to eleven o'clock, but other than that, I would not like to see Channel 14 restricted in any way, other than what the law says on obscenity and the restriction on indecent material. Whether, if an idea is unpopular and the majority doesn't like it, you must remember that although the majority rules, the majority has the obligation, the duty, to protect the rights of the minority. I might have a few unpopular opinions I'd like to air or view. Excuse me, I get nervous. I can't even write my own name. But it is mandatory in this country, under our Constitution, that people be allowed to espouse unpopular views. That goes for me and anyone else, whether I like them or not, whether I like their views or not. I didn't like some of the views of people who spoke up here. I didn't, I agreed with some of what they said, and I didn't agree with other things that they said. That's the way we are. I don't think anyone is 100% conservative or 100% liberal, because you might be conservative on one issue, liberal on another. I might find something very funny on Lisa's idiot show, and my son would say, "That is awful," which happened. I don't even know what it was. I was laughing, and he was just shaking his head. You know, that's in the same family. Now, my wife and I do not agree on some of the programming on Channel 14. I'm sure if she was here, she could just come up and say the opposite of what I was saying. But she also believes that everyone has the right to speak their opinion, to air their opinion. I want to make one point that has occurred, I've heard said throughout the evening, abuse of the channel. I have not seen any abuse of the channel. There have been no obscene programs that I have watched on 14 because it's prohibited by law. Now, there are some programs I thought were indecent that I've seen, and they were, but that was my opinion. So please, don't make any changes in the public access channel. One change that would be all right with me was the, from ten o'clock to eleven. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Schaefer, and I do a program on Channel 14 called Wind of Change, and I've been on broadcast for about a year and a half now. And the reason I started my show was because of Ron Kurttenbach's willingness to speak his mind, and I have a few ideas and a few things I wanted to say, so I got my own show. And first of all, I'd like to say, I am a Christian myself. I did not see the PIS show by Donny Smith, but I do, however, believe he had the right to express his beliefs, especially knocking on Christians. I do some criticism myself of certain religions, certain beliefs. I've talked about Donny Smith on my program. I've talked about Ron Kurttenbach's views on my program. And I'm going to make this short and sweet. I think we need to do absolutely nothing with Channel 14, other than to change to eleven o'clock, put on the, what would, some people would consider the indecent material. And as Lisa said from Lisa's idiot show earlier, my experience with Channel 14 has been the best thing that has ever happened to my life, and I don't want to see it thrown away. Thanks.
Hi, my name is April Block, and I'm just representing myself. I didn't know about the hearing. I was just sitting at home, and I saw this going on, so I came down. It made me a little excited. Some of the things, I will say, have already been stated, and they may be a little bit hackneyed, but some things need to be restated, I feel. And this is, since this is my only chance, that's what I'm going to do. I don't want to go into the First Amendment. If we are citizens of the United States, we should know everything that entails. That's all I have to say about that. As far as the offensive nature of some of the programs, you know, I find a lot of things offensive, okay? Mucus is offensive. Dirty diapers are offensive. I personally find Vanah White very offensive. However, that doesn't, I can just turn the channel, I don't have any kids, and I throw the Kleenex away without looking at it. Okay? And as far as, one thing that really offends me is pornography magazines specifically. I walk past them, I don't buy them, that's all there is to it. And there have been a lot of definitions tonight about art. The only thing I have to say about that, art is not pretty. Art is not always pretty. Art is there to make you think. You know, it's not to walk past a painting and become hypnotized, "Oh, it's pretty." That's not what it's there for. And a lot of times, I think, we want the TV to tell us exactly what we want to hear, and that's why we have so many channels. It can do that if we utilize it to its best benefit. In other words, if we see something offensive on Channel 14 and we don't like it, turn off the TV, turn to the next channel, send the kids to bed, whatever, call your neighbor and tell them not to watch it, et cetera. In essence, what I'm saying, any public medium is ideally there to make us think. That's what the media is there for. It's there to inform, to educate, to provoke thought, and so forth. For example, if you are a Christian and you see the PIS show or whatever, which I admit I've never seen, and it does offend you, okay, call your neighbors, tell them, "This show is awful. I don't want to see this show. Come down to the public access hearing. Let's combat this thing with all we've got." And if you end up witnessing more and more people get saved, hasn't it served its purpose? And if you are angered by these shows, that makes you think, it makes you act, and that is what public medium is all about. Thank you.
Just as I thought we would last with this.
My name's David Spilek, and I'll try and make it brief, although I'll follow up in writing with my more lengthy version. The minority programming issue, I think, is already overdue, and I'd like to see anybody that could instigate that and get it on as soon as possible. I think that would be a great idea. It seems like TV largely airs about the same thing. First of all, I can't afford cable TV. It's gotten to the point where it's more than my other utilities, it's more than my electricity, it's more than my gas. At this point, I would like to say that as far as the very tier structure, you should consider the fact of whether or not cable is affordable to everybody, and not whether the people who have eight outlets are going to be paying their fair share, but the people who don't even have one can afford to even get like this one particular station in their home. I would welcome if cable vision would offer, instead of more and more and more and more and more money, I think that a package where you could just pick maybe just a couple channels or things that you can't get over network TV, like I can get on Channel 10, 6, 3, and 12. I personally don't think that we should just keep getting more and more at a more and more increased price from a monopoly because it limits the ability of the poor people and the people that really don't have the means to have that. I have to go to a public place, to a friend's house, and convince him to watch Ron on TV, and it's not always easy to do that. To move right along, I would say that we should challenge the Channel 61 being the sixth station. I don't know if it's just because of its power or whether it's because of its, the fact that it's on UHF, and most people don't even go over to UHF anyway, and generally speaking, as far as network TV goes, there, I don't believe that, myself, I personally don't, through my antenna, get six channels. It's definitely, when you get to the extra outlet charge, you definitely shouldn't nail the person that has two TVs way more severely than the person that has eight TVs, because that's just kind of ridiculous. I can't, at this point, I have to say that you guys have a thankless job. It's going to be hard to make a decision out of all this, but from the standpoint of the general public, it's, I'd say, don't change it. If anything, number five, maybe as far as requiring producers to bear some of the cost of publishing, I don't think that's a good idea when the public access channel forbids any sort of income or any sort of monetary. As it is, these people have to do it all on their own time. There can't be any cash involved. They have to con a staff of free volunteers to help them produce these shows. It's not easy as it is. I would say if anything that we should change, we should make it easier to get more people to have shows on TV. We should make the training easier. I've been through the training, and I think that it's an incredibly complex thing to run a whole television studio, and that we should have a little more hands-on training. We should have better equipment. We should have, if anything, we should expand this. This is an excellent resource for our community, and it's ridiculous to consider stifling it or completely removing it from the air. If the mayor thinks that they should have a community access channel, I'd say that should be in addition to this channel, and that they could go ahead and do that, but that the, after 200 years, which we just celebrated the 200th anniversary of the Bill of Rights, freedom of speech is one of our only means of protecting our civilization and our culture as we know it. Myself personally, I appreciate the time for hemp shows because I know that all the other medias are making big money off of the drug war. I personally think that a civil war waged against its citizens is ridiculous, and this is one of the few stations where they can present an actual, like, an alternative view of what the situation is. Other than what you hear on TV, magazines, all these media companies are trying to sell more drugs to people and make a big deal out of it, and whereas what we need is straightforward facts and realistic personal concerns from all these minority groups. And personally, as far as, while I would personally say that my own productions, I would be proud to put my name on, from the standpoint of requiring everybody to put their name on everything that's on this show, on this station, for instance, from the standpoint of the war on drugs, I smoke marijuana, and I'm not ashamed to say it, and I don't think that I need to fear God because of it, but by the same token, the government, the media, everybody wages a war against me. I am in the midst of a civil war. I have no place else to air my particular side of that story. It's a complete, one-sided, outlandish dilemma. I would like to think that Jesus Christ himself protected the minorities, the downtrodden, the people who couldn't stand up for themselves, and I would say that, you know, anybody that is without sin can cast the first stone, but don't take the show off TV, because this whole station is important, and I would say enhance it and develop it. Don't eliminate it or censor it. Censoring will eliminate our right to freedom of speech. And I'm sorry.
Thank you. For those who have been watching this hearing on cable, I want to express appreciation and also give you the opportunity to write to our committee, and the address would be cable And the address would be Cable Television Franchise Review Committee, 129 North 10th Street. And the zip code is 68508. I want to thank everyone who has participated this evening. And as we conclude this hearing, we might well keep in mind the wisdom of Alexander Pope, the English poet, parrot, too, perhaps, when he penned these words early in the 18th century in an essay on criticism. "Jes with our judgments as our watches, none go just alike, yet each believes his own." This hearing is adjourned.
That's it? The show is over in a minute?
By car? They come down by?
For great iced tea.
How's that for a shorty? If you're only throwing?
Buy-to-buy, best western, good value and lodging.
Just too tired.
Billy. It's the 1992.
It's unpopular radio, is what Anthony Baxter is calling.
Terrific. And you're terrific. And make-
So how from Rockville did you get here?
From Hula Hoop.
Four nine, five thousand.
Oh, yeah, and besides, Fred.
Lots of girls like you. We share a really lovely place to trail through New Jersey and made the grade up.
Nothing gets you-